I'm going to ask, uh, Steve Huppert, Councilman Huppert, who is to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we have no public hearings tonight, is that correct? We'll go straight into the regular meeting. Uh, we'll call a meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is, uh, the minutes. The minutes of the December 22nd meeting. I believe you all have a copy of those.
I'll make a motion, will you approve your consent agenda?
Second.
Any further discussion? The motion in second.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
I abstain.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
It is five, oh, and one. Okay. Under recognitions, uh, anybody have anything you want to do, Barry?
I have those certificates from the clerks.
Right. I have copies of your, the three of your swearing-in documents for you all personally. We've got them here in the file, but if you want a copy of the, for your records.
What's the fr- the framed one?
Oh, the framed one, that's a new one, that's right.
That's getting ready to ask, Lee.
Yeah, they cut it back this year.
I'd like to mention, under recognitions, I know we don't have it there, but in the future is, uh, as, there's, of course, we now have a national champion here in the town of Christiansburg, Mrs. Camper, who, I think she's ten years old, of this not ten-year-old group, she won the national championship, of course, punt, pass, and kick. She's been an exemplary athlete for quite a tough, some time now, but in the future, I think that's, uh, something I know that we want to, maybe we would, as a council, look at.
I think so. I think so, uh...
Kayden, Kayden.
Kayden Camper. And she's actually, I think, going to be on the back of our brand-new, um, recreation, uh, the, uh...
Brochures.
Brochures, and it's going to have a big portion of that.
Yeah, I think it would be, it'd be nice to set up the date that we can get her here.
I agree.
And, uh, matter of fact, Mr. Hall, you want to set that up?
Be my pleasure.
Scoop, can you work with, do you know him pretty well? Marty had, Marty had contacted me several weeks ago, and after the, after they had won, she had won, and said, "We need to do this," and it was just kind of right in between, so...
I'll be glad to give it, Mr. Gordon.
And, and, Mr. Helms, just say what we got.
Absolutely.
The other thing under recognitions is not a, a recommend, it's not a recognition at this point, but I've been asked by Doug Kaney, who is president of the, of the Christiansburg Lions Club, they will be celebrating their 75th anniversary in, uh, February, and he's asked if, if we would consider by proclamation naming the week of February, the first through the 27th, as Christiansburg Lions Week. So, I've been working, huh?
First through 27th?
Twenty-first to the 27th.
I thought you said first, too.
Twenty-first to the, to the 27th is, is Lion, Christiansburg Lions appreciation. I've been working on the proclamation, just wanted to run it by and get nods from you all, that it is okay to go. Hearing now, I assume we will. Okay. I'll get your copies of that when it's done. Any other recognitions, Mr.?
Is there visa?
Yeah, please do, Mr. Helms. Councilman Bishop? Thank you.
Thank you, Ramon.
Thank you.
No other recognitions to come forth. Uh, this is our citizens' hearings, we don't have anyone scheduled, but if you're here and would like to address the town on any matter, please feel free to do so. If you'll raise, uh, if you'll address your comments to me, if you're going to speak, your name and address. Anyone here to address, council? Okay, moving right along here. We'll close the citizens' hearing. Uh, we have no scheduled staff reports for this month, is that correct? Okay. Discussion by mayor and council members, council action on uncondi- I'm sorry, a conditional use permit request by Guild and Restorations LLC, Agents for J&amp;M Enterprises LLC, for automotive upholstery with storage of no less than five inoperable vehicles at 930 Renou Street, tax parcel 528-a-36, in the I-2 General Industrial District. I believe we, uh, had the public hearing two weeks ago, there was, uh, no one that spoke opposed, and I believe it passed planning commission...
Eight and three absence.
Eight, eight and three absence.
Eight in favor and three absent.
Eight in favor and three absent.
I would move that, as a council, we accept the, uh, we approve of the conditional use permit as presented, uh, and respect the, uh, the, uh, recommendation of the planning commission.
Okay. Second. Motion in the second that we grant the request. Any discussion?
This would include the, I take it, the, the modifications from the planning commission, Mr. Helms?
The 13...
Thirteen.
Conditions.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, we heard them on a couple weeks ago with the planning commission, and these two guys are, are first-class people, they seem to be, you know, rolling the money, and I wish them well.
Good. All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That would be six oh. Thank you very much. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next up on the agenda, and I had emailed some of you, most, well, I emailed all of you last week or so, uh, about a possible appointment to the cemetery advisory committee. We are down to three members now, we have one that retired and one that moved away, and so we need to get back to a, a workable sum of three to, of four to five people. We've advertised it, uh, the only application we've gotten within the last three months is from former Councilman Wayne Booth, who is here tonight and has expressed an interest to, uh, in joining that committee.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve of Mr. Booth's acceptance into the cemetery committee.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Can I third it? Can I third it?
Third it, fourth it. Why don't we just, so we'll move unanimously on this.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That would be, um, six oh.
Mr. Mayor, I want to add a little something if I could. This is a tremendous time for, for Mr. Booth to, to come in and, and join the cemetery committee, uh, because we are really involved in quite a bit right now. The cemetery, uh, they're working a whole new section, is being surveyed at this time, and, and laid out, and hopefully by, uh, Memorial Day, we're going to have a columbarium, uh, on, on the grounds and, uh, set up and ready to go, and, uh, I think it's going to be really, uh, this is something that's, that's needed, and other cemeteries haven't, and, uh, I think, uh, he's going to get, um, it's going to get, you had to get some excitement out of it, Wayne.
Good. Thank you. Committee member Booth, do you have anything you'd like to say to us?
Uh, thank you, and I'm looking forward to it, good committee. I drive past there a lot on the way to our daughter's home on Summit Ridge Road, and it's a beautiful place, it really is, and I think we're on the interstate, we look over there, it's really unique, like, I just don't want to be a resident.
Yeah. We, we do, we do, we appreciate your willingness to serve, and kind of glad to have you back in the saddle again with us, it's been too long.
I'm keeping my church alive to run, so...
Go ahead, unless Brad wants to.
I'd like to make a brief statement about Mr. Booth. When I first got on the planning commission, uh, he's had a major hand in shaping our community that it is, you know, what we've been, what we've been given, but I actually thought of him last week. He didn't quit when he retired from the council, he, I don't know if you all know the cellular tower that's at the New River Valley Mall? He had a lot to do with organizing his community, and that, even, even in retirement, you've stayed active, uh, in shaping it, and I appreciate what you did on that cellular tower, so I walked by Sears last weekend, I think it was either a week or two ago, and saw that, and if it hadn't been for you and your community, but he's stayed involved and continued to make a difference, and I appreciate you, and I think we all appreciate you stepping up again.
It's a good place to live. Christiansburg is a great place to live. I travel through it a lot, it's well taken care of, the infrastructure is strong, and it's just, uh, it's a great place to live. So, thank you very much.
And Mr. Helms already knows that he has a grandson who's via junior at, at BMI right now?
He's a, he's a second, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Wayne.
All right. Am I right, Mr. Mayor?
Third thing on our discussion list is, uh, backcountry.com economic development grant to the Economic Development Administration, Mr. Helms?
It's part of the agreement, uh, with the Economic Development Alliance, or Economic Development, County Economic Development Office, uh, that if backcountry.com met the goals that were established when they came, that we would do a tax rebate of 25% of the taxes that they paid per year for, uh, three years, and they've requested us to, they met their goals, uh, and, so they're requesting 13, 14 and 15, uh, rebate, uh, is, would not go, we don't pay backcountry.com, it goes to the Economic Development Office. So, that total is $22,496.53, and I recommend it, live up to our agreement.
So moved.
Motion in second, any further discussions? Any discussions?
They met all the criteria, Mr. Helms?
Yes, well, they, they amended some because their employee wasn't quite what it was, so that...
But they amended criteria, it's all been...
Yes, amended criteria.
How about the future, was there anything slated for the future?
Not that, they talk about things, but there's nothing on, we don't receive anything to, that they're going to expand, or, they did buy another company and move that stuff here, so they have expanded some, but in the existing building.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Keep waiting for Van Hoosier, I'll... Thank you, that's six oh. All right, uh, next, number four on the agenda is a discussion regarding proration of personal property taxes. Ms. Tweedy?
Um, I put a memo at your table, on the place for the meeting today, um, it just briefly goes over sort of the advantages and disadvantages and, and where we are. Um, as you know, the Board of County Supervisors approved proration at county level, um, which leaves us with a choice of, do we stay with non-proration, or do we move to proration with county? So I just kind of went through in this memo how it works currently under the system of non-proration. Basically, anything that's garaged in Christiansburg on January 1, preceding January 1, is subject to personal property tax for the entire year, regardless of whether you replace it with another vehicle, whether you move in or out of town, um, doesn't matter. So, for example, on January 1st, I own a Town and Country, um, and on June 30th, I sell that and I buy a Ford Explorer. Under proration, I won't get taxed on that Ford Explorer until the following year. I will only be taxed in the current year for what was garaged in Christiansburg on January 1st of that year. Likewise, if I move in or out of town during the year, there's no change. It's, if I move to Giles County, um, and it, my vehicle was garaged in Montgomery County in Christiansburg on January 1, I still owe that property tax for the entire year. That's how proration, non-proration works. Currently, we get that file from the county on about 1st of September, we bring it into our system, we assess the motor vehicle license fees on it, and then we get a few corrections. The, most of the corrections we get on personal property tax have to do with, uh, proof from the DMV in some form or another that the vehicle was no longer garaged in Christiansburg, that they had just failed to notify the DMV in a timely manner, and then the DMV has made a change to the records, which then allows us to, to drop that vehicle. And then dropping the decal fee, because it's paid in advance, the decal fee will get dropped if they did in fact move out of Christiansburg. So those are the majority of the corrections that we do under non-proration. Um, and then the other time that is spent getting that file ready for bill is applying the, uh, discount percentage, the PPTRA, that comes from the commonwealth every year, which is now fixed at $225,252.25, something like that. Um, and, and that, you guys all vote on that percentage, um, when we do the calculation, and once we do that calculation, then that discount is applied to all motor vehicles throughout the year. That's on non-proration, so, some of the, um, under proration, what would happen is when I, for using the same example of my Chrysler to my Ford, I would get billed for six months of owning my Chrysler and six months for owning my Ford, at whatever the rates are for those vehicles. Likewise, if I move out of the town of Christiansburg and change my address on September 1st, I'm only going to pay for nine months on, the two vehicles may be split, but I'm only going to pay for the period of time that I lived in town. If I move into Christiansburg, I'm going to get picked up and paid for any period of time that I am garaged in Christiansburg. So if I move in in February, I'm going to get taxed that year for 11 months. Um, the county will be basically generating that file throughout the year. They're going to be pulling down DMV records on a weekly basis to determine what is garaged in Christiansburg, when it's here, when it's not, what's moved in, what's moved out, who's moved in, who's moved out, and applying all of those changes, so that on September 1st, we would get a file from the county that had essentially all of the changes to the file for all the changes in vehicles and people moving in and people moving out through July, roughly, because at some point they have to cut it off and generate the file. Then everything that changes after that date would be supplemental or correction that would be sent to us on a one-by-one basis. So, for everybody who moves in, for everybody who moves out, for everybody who changes vehicles, we would get a supplemental and a correction to update our file with. Clearly, at some point, we have to cut it off for our billing as well, we would get in as many of those as we could before the file goes to the printer, but clearly there would be changes after bills go out that couldn't be accommodated or input before the bills got mailed. So it becomes more of a continual process of supplementals and corrections to the personal property taxes than it is under non-proration. Kind of how they, they differently work. And what is on the back is a kind of, tried to run through a list of advantages and disadvantages of each of the different methodologies. So some of the advantages of not doing proration are, there's no changes in our current policies, procedures, or processes, everything just kind of keeps on going. Um, it may mitigate some potential software issues. Uh, the county is still required to provide the file to us on a non-prorated basis as well as the related corrections and supplementals, and we would do fewer refunds to be processed, and they're concentrated pretty much in December and January for any refund or other things. Disadvantages are the citizens' perception, um, of the county being on one basis and the town on a different basis of assessment on the personal property taxes, and the citizens may assume that one method is more fair than another, um, and they're paying more because one's fair and one's not. Citizens will be confused that there are two different bases, um, and it will require a little more time by my staff to explain why it's different, how is it different, why we are doing it the way we're doing it. The third disadvantage would be the reliability of data coming from the county, because they're generating their corrections and supplementals based on a prorated status, and the reliability that what they would sift out and send to us is strictly related to a non-proration will require that we spend a little bit more time reviewing all of those corrections and supplementals that they send us to make sure that they're truly what we would need to apply.
Ms. Tweedy, I'm not trying to get ahead, um, down with the proration advantages and disadvantages are going to be discussed, but under no proration, disadvantages, um, the staffing needs, because it's going to require additional scrutiny on what you'll be receiving from the county anyway, what kind of hours, and I hate to put you on that, but let me put you on that, what kind of hours, if you can give us kind of a ballpark, are we looking at per week to allow you to, again, effectively scrutinize what we're going to be receiving from the county?
For, if we stayed with non-proration, I'd say that's probably about 10 to 15 hours a week from September to...
December. End of December.
January.
And that would be on, is that a pretty conservative estimate of the hours?
I think that's conservative on a non-proration.
Okay.
Okay.
So wouldn't be surprised if it were to be a little more than 10 to 15?
Nah, wouldn't be too surprising.
Okay. Thank you.
So, for proration, the advantages are, it puts us on the same basis as the county, it's a little less confusing to the citizens, um, and it may be perceived as being more fair. The reliability of the data then that we get from the county in terms of the supplementals and corrections, because it's the same basis as theirs, is going to be more reliable, and we won't have to scrutinize that data as much, although there's going to be a lot more of it. There is an initial expected increase in revenue of approximately $70,000 a year, and that would be the incremental amount that would kind of be, you know, the bump in the first year, and it would just kind of level after that. And that's based on, that number was based on the estimates that the county came up with, and then sort of backed down to isolating it to Christiansburg. The disadvantages, um, it will require a lot of changes in policies and processes and the procedures that we do on a day-to-day basis. There'll be a significant amount of retraining of staff so that they clearly understand how proration works, and will be able to explain it to the citizens. Um, there could be some software issues with implementation of the new billing process. The, one of the major things that I haven't quite figured out how we'll do, but I'm sure there's a solution, should we choose to go that way, is the application of motor vehicle license fee, um, because now how we do it is, there's a motor vehicle license fee attached to every vehicle that's garaged in Christiansburg on January 1. Well, since now you might have two, you only need one decal fee if you only have one vehicle, but now we have two vehicles for you, so figuring out how to apply that fee in our software might be difficult, but I'm sure we'd find a solution. Um, the calculation for the PPTRA will become more complex, but again, it is something that I think we can figure out how to do. It may be a little more strenuous, but I think it can be done. It will require additional staff to keep up with all of the corrections and supplementals that are continually going to be coming in from September right into January, and refunds will have to be processed on an ongoing basis. They won't be done just in December and January, it'll be an ongoing thing for, for refunds to be processed. And I did, as a note down below, um, our current tax filing specialist, she's keeping up just barely on, uh, non-prorated basis. We steal other staff time to help her get files ready and get stuff out the door and make supplementals and changes. I, if we go to proration, I, I just, there's no way that she can expand, or we can steal the additional staff time from other people, and I'm thinking that that's an additional 25 hours a week, particularly from September through January, to process all those changes, corrections, and getting the bills out on a timely basis. So, that's kind of my summary of that.
Ms. Tweedy?
Even the stuff that the county gives you, you still are going to have to do quite a bit of work to adjust to that, right?
Yeah, because the changes are continual. We'll get a file that's up to date through Ja- July, roughly, we'll have to process that all into the system, and then bring in all of the corrections up until the point in time that we're ready to send bills to the printer, and then the, the corrections and supplementals will be continual throughout the remainder of the year, and into, early into the following tax year.
So you're thinking you're going to have to hire maybe at least one half-time person?
I would put a full-time person in, because with the change of the monthly billing and stormwater utility billing, and if we went to proration, all of that combined, definitely another full-time person.
Ms. Tweedy, the disadvantages that you mentioned under proration and no proration, both of them are going to require additional staffing, correct? Regardless of which way we go, you're going to have, it's going to be 10 to 15 conservatively, or 25 hours, which really, from September, and that, and that's, I'm glad you mentioned that, uh, Mayor, is that, can you find within your staff and a, a person who can increase their workload or increase their, um, hours, that, that they're, basically move from a part-time to full-time status within your office now, or are you referring to actually hiring an additional person, additional staff member?
I'd be an additional staff member. Everybody on my staff is already pretty much maxed to their capabilities, um, there's not a whole lot more hours that anybody can do.
Does it, does it, you have a part-time person?
Part-time person.
I don't have a part-time.
Device services.
Well, she's filling in for the FMLA.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I have a temp person.
Okay.
And that's who he was thinking of.
Okay.
I have a temp person that's been covering for the FMLA, these that I have going on in my office.
The, the person that we're looking to, and I hate to use the word, again, temp, as far as this is concerned, but it looks like the staffing needs are going to be somewhat quarantined to the, the last, I'm not going to say quarter, but last third of the, of the year, from September to December, January. It's, are you going to need that same staffing from January through September as well?
With all of the other things that we're bringing onboard, yes.
Like stormwater and things like that?
Because of the water. Otherwise, I would definitely say if I could find, which is difficult to do, but finding a part-time person who knows all the rules and all that stuff for that short of a window, it can be difficult to do, however, because we have all of these other new programs that we're implementing, I, there's no question that I can fill another person full-time during...
So, so really, regardless of proration, you're going to need another person, whether it be full-time or part-time, you're going to need someone, again, regardless of what we do on proration.
Yes.
It just so happens that if we go, if, if you don't, if we go with, say, no proration, disadvantage being, again, 10 to 15 hours, conservatively speaking, with the person you're going to hire, or the person you'd be looking to hire for the extra, again, fees that we talked about, and extra, the stormwater and so on and so forth, is that person, how many hours a week would you anticipate if it was strictly for the new things we're doing, not counting proration? Any ideas on the amount of hours per week you're going to need in your office for that person to fill?
If you incorporate all three things?
If you do not, if you leave out proration entirely?
Without proration?
I mean, not even, not even considering no proration or proration. The reason I'm asking that question, I don't mean to be so convoluted, but, yeah, I'm looking at, are we looking at, it's going to be a full-timer regardless, I mean, and if, whichever way we go, or, so where we can... I mean, and whichever way we go, or sort of where we can cut a cost or cut an expense? It sounds like it's not, is that what we're going to have to do, full-time?
It would be difficult, because I don't think it's, I think it's more than a half-time.
Okay.
And it's probably without, I don't know, I mean, even with the extra hours, if we don't go to proration, I can easily fill a person full-time.
Is that going to be in the budget too for your department, just to have an additional person, additional full-timer?
Yeah.
Okay. Then the last question I have, I'd like to, there's one more question. As our, again, finance director, and then, I mean, I'll be, I'll lean towards proration. I appreciate proration, I like proration frankly, and the, I like the fundamental fairness type argument more than anything. But as a finance director, what am I missing? Am I, should I be looking somewhere else, or what is your opinion for us to look at?
I think if the county had not gone to proration, my feeling is just because of the simplicity and because of the extra administrative work that it creates, I would have preferred to stay with non-proration. However, once the county made the change, I think it becomes exceedingly difficult on us, both from an administrative perspective and from the citizen's viewpoint, to not do proration, to be on a different basis of, from the county. Then no matter how we look at it, you're going to have major confusion and misperceptions in that from the citizenry. And whether they think one is more fair than the other, kind of doesn't matter in the sense that one will be perceived as unfair, whether that's us or the county, one will be. And it becomes then a push and pull between us and the county. And I think, you know, the more cooperative effort into to have, you know, less conflict for the citizens is probably what we want to be looking at.
Consistency being, absolutely.
Yeah. The reason I asked that.
I think that proration is more fair, and I'm going to, in the respect of, once we're here, we're here. And I'll, the challenges that we're going to face with going to that are fairly difficult for us to overcome.
I love the fact that you said, but you can do it. I just think that that gives us all the peace of mind.
We'll find a way to do it. I may not like the solution, but...
The reason I asked to have this on here tonight is because I've had a lot of people to ask me what we're doing, you know? And just like you said, they think proration is the right way to go. And that's what I think too personally. If we do that, when do we need to do it?
Well, the county would probably be happier if we told them sooner rather than later, because it will affect how they start to accumulate the file that they're going to send to us. I mean, I don't think it's a decision that you have to make tonight, and I don't think it even has to be made in the next two weeks, but sooner definitely rather than later, because it will affect how they accumulate the file to give to us.
Okay, let me ask you this also. Presently, the Department of Property Taxes are due December 5th or whatever, and that's Christmas time for everybody. That's just wrong. Can't we do it some other time?
I believe that's state law.
And not in Rutherford County, it's not?
The counties can do it twice, or do it twice a year.
Right.
Not for personal property, no.
Real estate you can split between June and December.
Mm-hmm.
But personal property can't be split.
Mr. Helms, the, and I really appreciate Ms. Tweedy, your, I appreciate this breakdown. Again, for a dummy like me, this is a valuable document. But Mr. Helms, if we were looking to take a position on this, now it's, or maybe I didn't ask the attorney and the mayor, it's not actually on here tonight for, it's a discussion, but certainly not for a vote, but we really don't need a formal vote, it's just a, or do we, will we have to get some future?
I think we should.
I mean, well, I guess tonight?
Public hearing?
I, I... Yes. We're not required to follow the county's lead. What I see is, you know, an estimated $70,000 bump that is going to probably be, that 70 probably gonna, you're probably gonna eat 40 to 50 in salaries and benefits. So is all this worth 20 grand a year to us for all the work and headache? And we don't know what it's going to cost us if we have problems with the software. It could cost us another $100,000 to get ready for the software to do, so.
Do you anticipate that being a $100,000 problem with the software, Ms. Tweedy?
Not that much.
Okay.
We are already looking into replacing our tax software, so...
I take it there's certain software on the market that would be, have a program such as that would utilize the proration, correct? And as far as you're going to need another person, you're, you've already requested the budget, a person in your department as well anyway, correct? Another?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we voting on this tonight, or are we deciding?
No, I think...
Do a public hearing?
I'd be comfortable in voting. I have a couple of thoughts. I don't see how something that's more accurate could be anything but more fair and defensible. Even if we were taking a hit, even if we're taking a hit, a small hit revenue-wise, I mean, I think since the conversation's been started and the case has been made, my question for you, what's your recommendation? But the more we talk about it, I don't see, I don't, I don't see how we couldn't, if we're interested in the most fair thing to, I'm sorry. I can't see how it would, anything that's more accurate could be anything but more fair. And I would, I'd be comfortable to move in that direction this evening and then figure out the details of, you know?
Can we figure out the details in the vote?
You're right again.
Just from a lawyer's standpoint.
Well, I'm talking about staff.
Right.
I mean, but...
I guess, I guess coming back and telling you what the details would be in voting at that time, I think, from a staff standpoint.
Just from a staff standpoint?
Well, from a legal standpoint too. I'm not going to throw it just out.
I'd recommend going ahead and having a public hearing, because some people could say this is a change in your tax, sort of taxes.
Well, it is.
So if we have it, and if we don't have to have one, we're better off to go ahead and have it.
We're frankly looking at maybe voting on this late February. We do a public hearing, we have a public hearing, there'll always be the next meeting, first meeting in February to the second, we might, is that, Ms. Tweedy, how does that timeframe work with you?
That's fine.
You know, I was in the school system for a long time, and some of you people who have kids, I may tell you that Christiansburg High School is on block, block scheduling, and Blacksburg High School is on ordinary scheduling. And if you have a kid transfer from Blacksburg to Christiansburg or Christiansburg to Blacksburg, it is just so tough on their schedules. My point here is, I think it's good if we are doing the same thing that county is doing to make so everybody understands how we're doing it and it all is on the same, same par right there. And that is one reason that I would go for, for proration.
So we need to set a public hearing?
We could do that.
Okay. If you'll take care of that.
I'm wondering would the citizens be affected?
We'll need to get this tax year.
This year, okay.
Okay. Ms. Rolle was here, was she going to? No. She came, I think.
I didn't see her back there.
Oh, I didn't see you until Val moved her head.
Yes, I said, I couldn't see her.
I just came in case there were any questions that nobody had answered. You all are doing fine.
So we will move on, is our reorganization for the year 2016, the first item on the agenda is the election of Vice Mayor.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Cord Hall to fill that role, and maybe in the future, informally consider that the last, last election, the highest vote getter.
Well, that wasn't exactly my plan, but if that's what you wanted to do. That wasn't exactly my...
I'm going to change my seat again.
No, Mr. Mayor, can I come in for a minute? I was going to, I think Cord was the Vice Mayor last year before, and I think it is, from what I gather, it is your desire to sort of rotate Vice Mayors, so everybody will get a little shot at it. And I know that Mr. Showalter has not been Vice Mayor, you know, and so I was thinking, I, you know, on council's discretion on what they felt like, but I would think that maybe this might be a good year to have Mr. Showalter as a Vice Mayor. And I would make that recommendation.
Well, I have one motion on the floor.
No, I would throw my motion.
I did second it.
I haven't had any conversations with anybody I know will talk about this. I don't, I don't feel strongly, I feel strongly with any of you five.
Vice Mayor equally?
There's six of us.
Councilman Showalter would have fun Vice Mayor.
I think Cord's done a great job this past year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we'll say, we did, we did discuss the highest vote getter. And I believe we all agreed on it, and that would be Mr. Sam Bishop, but Mr. Hubbard makes a point, I have not been Vice Mayor, I'd be happy, and I told our Mayor Barber, I'd be happy to do it, an honor to do it, so.
So we have a motion for Mr. Showalter, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'll second that motion.
A motion in the second. The only discussion portion of it that I would have is, I think if you, I like the idea of rotating the Vice Mayors amongst council, and, you know, if we get into the selection of the highest vote getter, then that puts that person in for two years. Not that I would mind serving two years with anybody, but it's just, I like the fact that we can rotate and everybody gets a seat, because I'm not getting any other.
So you're saying it'll be Cord every other year?
No, no, no. So we have, any other discussion?
No, I think whatever we do, Mayor, we need to come up with policy and decisions to go about. I mean, it may not be tonight, but whenever it is.
We have a policy that it normally comes from council. I will look back and see. I could not find anything that said in our discussions over the last year that the leading vote getter automatically comes in, there's nothing on record for that. In the past, it has been selected by council.
And we've had repeats in there.
Go back to back, yeah, we have had some, we have had some, so.
I think having a policy, I think, I think having a policy is nice from a standpoint that, in this case, in today's council, I'm equally comfortable with any of the five.
I agree.
And so why would we want to say, well, I like Henry better than Sam or Cord or Steve?
I'm trying to afford all of you the opportunity.
Are you saying that's why I'm there for the Vice Mayor?
No, you turned it down four or five times. And that's usually the case.
It's only because I was forced to do it.
I'm saying, if there's a policy, then I don't have a...
I like the, I think the simplest policy is, is we rotate that. I like the, I was, I'm in favor of the highest vote getter, I've discussed that in the last couple of years. I think it's a way to honor the Vice Mayorship with, as a person who gets that highest vote getter, which at this point would be, I believe, Mr. Bishop, correct?
The last election.
The last election. But I also, I'd be very honored, I enjoy going to breakfasts with Mike, that's been a lot of fun, but I like the network, I think it's very important.
It is.
You get the chance to meet everybody. But I think if we're going to rotate, I think that's fine too. I think we all need to have that opportunity to be in that spot. So I stick by what I, what I, my second of Mr. Showalter, and acknowledge that obviously next time it's going to be Mr. Bishop or Mr. Collins.
How about this, I'll take it this year, and we got all your talk about it.
There we go.
Well, and that's, that's the other case I have too. It is, it is a rotation, and part of the, part of the guidelines we've always operated off of is that a seated, seated councilman has to serve at least two years prior to being appointed to, eligible to be appointed as a Vice Mayor. So that's what, that's what we've done in the past, so I will get together my thoughts on those things, and we'll come up with an idea, but I do like the rotation, and hopefully as long as I am able to sit here in this chair, I will be able to do a fair rotation.
And you have no plans of being gone several months this year?
Well, you know, I don't talk to you.
I want this on record.
No, I haven't, I didn't, I don't think, I don't think I ever put the monkey on the horse back.
That one time I had to.
So we have a motion in the second for Mr. Showalter to be our Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we need to set our regular meeting dates of council, which is currently the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. It's seven o'clock here in council chambers.
I would move that we continue with the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at the seven o'clock hour.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to authorize the Vice Mayor, Assistant Town Manager, and Finance Office Manager to sign checks. Currently, the authorized signatures are the Town Manager, the Mayor, and the Finance Director.
I'll make a motion that we approve that request as we move on.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
And the Finance Director, I think you'll get the proper documentation. Next is the appointment of Committees of Council. Mr. Helms, do you have that list, or I have sent it out?
You want?
Yes, please. And this is just our committees, it is not our subcommittees. I have proposed and spoke with most of you, I believe I have Water and Sewer, Water, Sewer and Solid Waste will be Mr. Showalter and Mr. Hall. Street will be Mr. Stipes and Mr. Collins. Finance will be Mr. Showalter and Mr. Stipes. Fire and Rescue, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Hubbard. Central Business District, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Showalter. And the other two committees, the Public Health and Welfare Committee and Council on Human Relations Committee are ad hoc committees.
Is there a way to get rid of the Human Relations, I don't think there's necessarily been a council?
It's always been the chief, I believe.
It's Chief Sisley and someone else that's on very standing committee.
Has there been a meeting since you've been chief?
I'd just like to have him on the bubble.
Before we get rid of it, I mean, I understand, I was on, I think that's what we each get put on our first year on council.
I've been on the chief once before.
But is there a need to this in case there is some sort of public relations, not necessarily an emergency or what?
I don't know what the, honestly, what the committee means.
Mark, since you've been on forever, tell us what it is.
What are y'all up to these days?
I will entertain dropping any committees that you would like to...
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, we can always crave it if we need to, but it comes up every year, and it's something we all laugh at, or at least I laugh at.
Okay.
Is that a motion, Mr. Stipes? Yeah, I'll take, I would recommend we take Council on Human Relations off if it's no offense to the chief.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Have a motion in the second? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Okay, we're a little less nameless committee. Thank you.
I don't forget to plan the commission.
That's, well, that is a, that's a subcommittee, that is what you are the representative. I will go over those, Mr. Hubbard, to the cemetery committee.
Thank you.
Central Business, the Central Business Advisory Committee will be Mr. Bishop and Mr. Showalter. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Hall, Planning, Mr. Collins, Aquatic, Mr. Hubbard. Mr. Hubbard will be the alternate on the Aging, Agency on Aging. Planning District Commission is Mr. Showalter, and I will be the alternate. Tourism is Mr. Bishop, Mr. Collins is an alternate. The NBC Development Corporation will be me, the NPO will be me, the Chamber Liaison will be me, backed up by Vice Mayor. New Development Corporation will be me, and the Bike Way Walkway Committee is Mr. Stipes. All right. Wow.
Mike, we don't have any changes like in the Air, New York Airport Committee?
No, those appointments aren't up yet.
Okay.
They, they are usually on a term of two or four years.
That's right.
So they're, they're not coming before us at this particular time, and we'll deal with them as they, as they come about.
I understand, thank you.
You got your jet in the club, by Henry, you get the mic.
I was hoping our current Vice Mayor gets on it.
I guess you already.
He is your bringing man, you know that, right?
I got him, he was running trolling.
Actually, before you, before you, versus Mr. Showalter, Mr. Mayor, there's a section, there's closed meeting number one, there's a closed meeting number two. I would make a motion that the closed meeting number two be stricken.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, stricken?
To stricken?
To stricken. Anybody, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We got it. So we got one closed session.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, sir.
Closed meeting, request for closed meeting under one Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance. The motion salaries disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of personal personnel, specifically the appointment of officers for the year 2016. Second.
A motion in the second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to take about a three or four minute recess, and I'll call meeting back to order.
Matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meetings.
Do you have a motion?
In the second?
Second, all those in favor, signify, I'm saying, have to, have to do a voice vote?
Yes, sir.
That's why, that's why we have to do this.
Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Okay, we're conveniently out of closed session. Our actions on the matter will be as follows, the appointment of officers.
Mr. Mayor, I would, it would be my pleasure to make a motion that we reappoint Town Manager, Barry Helms.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard? Councilman Showalter? Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, it would be my pleasure to make a motion that we reappoint our Finance Director slash Treasurer, Val Tweedy.
Second.
Motion in the second?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, I would, it would be my pleasure to move that we reappoint our Police Chief, Mark Sisson.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, it would be my pleasure to move that we reappoint our Town Attorneys, the Law Firm of Gwen, Memor, and Dylan.
Gwen and Waddell.
And what was that?
Gwen and Waddell, no.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I cleaned my foot and my.
Sorry. Have a motion?
Have a second.
Motion in the second? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we reappoint our Clerk of Council, Michelle Stipes.
Second.
Motion in the second? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
I abstain.
Congratulations to all that have been reappointed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to a good year with you. We will be talking with those appointed toward the end of the year, just kind of see what's going on in order. Council reports. Mr. Collins, I want you, you got anything for the good of the crew?
Uh, yeah, I just like to thank the citizens of Blacksburg for electing me into this position. I'd like to thank Michelle and Brad Stipes for getting me into this process. I thank Sam for keeping my head from getting too big. Every time I run a guest, he picked the crap out of me, so. I can appreciate all you guys very much.
Thank you.
And ladies.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything from the Fire and Rescue. I do have something, I'd like for us to put on a work schedule or session, and that's the task list that we will push back from last year again. So we have a work session on that soon, we're down the road. It's a task list.
Okay. Mr. Tom?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Recreation Commission, we met the first Monday of January, and discussed regular business there at the, at the commission meeting. We were, I think there's a lot of excitement because we are understanding that some of the artistic renderings will be done very soon through the Truman Wilson property, it just continues to add, I think, start to, kind of stokes that flame. It's a very exciting time. The next meeting for Recreation Commission is going to be the first Monday in, in February. I do want to recognize Mr. Collins. Again, I appreciate the fact that he was voted on, and I look forward to working with Mr. Collins, as I have with Mr. Bishop before him. The two things I want to add as well, Mr. Bishop brought up a great point about the task list. In addition, I think that I would request that the, in the future, maybe the Street Committee, I know this is Mr. Collins' first meeting, the Street Committee, I'd ask that we, it be discussed that on the corner there of Tranquility and Independence. Years ago, used to be, or a couple of years ago, used to be a line that divided that hill. When you go over, it's right down from the high school, so a lot of the high school kids tend to fly there, it's the connector that you get over to Sleepy Hollow. And actually, it was law enforcement that brought this to my attention, they're correct. And, and it's just, it's dangerous for our children and our kids, because people tend to just veer to the left a little bit over there, you don't realize what you're doing. And I did the same thing, and I'm trying to be more cognizant of that. But if we could just look at, if it's appropriate for us, maybe just a line, it's only about a hundred foot line that we go in the middle of that, just so people know it's the crest of that hill to stay over on their side.
Independence.
It's, it's on the corner of Independence and right where Tranquility is.
That's where Roger Woody lives. I know exactly.
Yes, that's right.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
That's right.
Because I've found myself.
Hey, that's a dangerous spot, too, when they're coming over that hill.
It is. And I, I was talking, I knew Mr., and, and it wasn't a member of the Town of Christiansburg Police Department, but that brought to mind, it was an outside group, that individual that lives close by, and just asked if we could do something. I said, no, it's a great idea, I didn't think about it, and so.
There are often walkers along there.
Yes.
And sometimes cars are just flying over.
So if that could just be looked at, and, and nothing, I just, if we could do a line there. And then also, the Water and Sewer Committee, I know that Mr. Showalter are going to be looking to have another meeting to that in the near future, and it might interest you all, because I think we're going to continue to talk about some, obviously trash pickup, like we always do, but recycling, I think seems to be a big issue, and hopefully tackle and deal with in the better part of this year. But that's all I have as far as my report. Oh, one other thing I want to mention, she's no longer here, but I got probably the most splendid, I guess, just, someone talked about the aquatics, and it was in Pulaski, I was in court, I can't remember what it was, but they were there for meat, and just out of the, I think they were from, it's outside the area, it was a distant turnip property up close to where Mr. Gwen works, but said they were up for a meat, and that they've been to many others, apparently they go all over the East Coast, and this made it a point to make sure that I was aware, somehow they found out on Council, that, that the one here was, it was second to none as far as organization. And they said it was really a lot of fun, because they didn't have to try to scurry about and find things, it was all very well that he told four of them. I was hoping that I would be able to pass along to Terry while she was here, but it was fantastic to hear that, because they were extremely genuine. I mean, this was, this person was just thrilled, couldn't wait to come back. But I want to make sure that I brought that up as well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Show, Mr. Stipes, I'm sorry.
Just a restatement, I'd like to say that it's going to be, it's going to be an exciting year for this Council to be working together, and with Barry's sun setting, and with new, you know, a new regime coming in. In past, in past decisions that we've made as a Council, I haven't had the really positive, optimistic feeling that I have right now with, with the others sitting at the table. And so I'm just really looking forward to a great year, we got a great Council, works well together, and it's going to be an exciting year. It's going to be really interesting how we look next time we have this conversation next January. Thanks.
Vice Mayor, Showalter?
Right. The Central Business Advisory Committee, we should be meeting here in the next couple of weeks, right, Sam?
Twenty-sixth.
I suppose the nineteenth and the fifth.
That's twenty-sixth.
Yeah, next Council meeting, right, right for that, so.
Okay.
We're going to be, Sam and I will be charging hard with that, along with our, of course, our Chair, our Co-Chairs on that, so be ready for what's coming, which is a good thing. I wanted to sort of weigh in on Cord, I know this has to do with Street Committee, but I know, sent out an email, I noticed a traffic, well, I found out it was a traffic study, but I thought it was just a, which I forgot about, I asked Chief about on George Edgar Via, but, I mean, Chief, it's up to you, but it sounds like that area, which whenever I've campaigned, I've walked down through, Independence, down through there, that's all I hear about from those residents on there, is how dangerous it is. Is that almost an ideal place to, to have something like that? It's, you know, I understand what you said, it's in sort of a conspicuous place to see it, because the main goal is just to get a study going, but still, to see how fast you're going through there, at least it, it gives you some idea that, hey, maybe I need to slow down. Would that be an ideal place up in there to do a study, and to have that there as well?
We could do that, we have two of those units, and there's some priorities, we have to move those quite often based on requests within the town. I sent the study to the entire Council, I was going to tell them about, because we do get a lot of complaints there. If you will look, if you look at the study, and there are vehicles that are violating the speed limit, but the average speed there is like twenty-six miles per hour. So the one thing that makes it tough in that area, is you have parking on both sides of the street that's narrow, and a lot of houses are close to a roadway, so that's something we continually battle there, work with the residents, and will continue to provide enforcement in that, in that area. That may be a good place to put, I don't know if it's a great place to put our speedbox and leave it, but there may be a, and Traffic Calming Committee can talk about another option.
Replace, replace the speed.
Speedbox, yeah. I'm telling you, I know I'm Vice Mayor, right? It's just an idea, I do it out there, and I appreciate you answering back on that, because I totally forgot about our conversation when that person called me, I went out there. I want to weigh in on the Aquatic Center, and Mike, are you going to mention anything about the logos we're looking into putting up there, or adding more, or branding to it? I'm, I'm going to jump in there, it's something I believed in years, but, and Mike's really embraced. When you walk into our Aquatic Center, Cord, I think it's, I mean, it's a, I mean, it's an Olympic facility, state of the art, and our community supports that, because we're not a huge metropolitan area, okay? But when you walk in, and I have kids who swim, and I'm there all the time, and they're incredible meets, if you ever get a chance to go to one, go. I mean, I'm amazed every time I go, with just the type of kids that are there, and the camaraderie and things like that, but when you walk in, you don't think it's the Town of Christiansburg facility, okay? And so, our Mayor's been working hard, along with staff, to make sure we brand that thing, let, let people know it, it's Town of Christiansburg. I'm not going to mention what impressions usually you get when you walk in, but I'm glad Mike's working on that. I want to just talk briefly about this, with Council to think about this, and I do it out there, you know, with Harry coming on, and congratulations, Harry, and seeing him. And I know Harry already submitted his picture, which is, was that a glamour shot, or old Mills, or something, but.
It's about twenty years old.
But, you know, and it's something I'd like for Council to think about, I'd like for us to visit soon, but, you know, we usually, you know, it's relatively dark in here, I'm not saying if I go outside, I'm going to look any healthier in a picture, but I would like to see us all possibly do something a little bit more casual for our webpage, a little bit more informal.
You have a huckleberry.
Yeah. During the day, and then get individual pictures. To me, it's, I mean, no offense, we, it's pretty, the pictures we got out there are pretty rough for us right now, so.
I had talked with Allison today, and, and we didn't know, you know, we were going to do the suit and tie thing, as we normally do, we didn't know with the 5:30 meeting, people coming straight from work, where they'd be able to, but I will get with them, and if we want to do it, I'm, I'm all for doing it casual, I think it's a, it's a good thing.
Well, we mean, business casual.
Business casual, yeah.
And with Sean.
No jeans and t-shirts or nothing like that.
You're a Steve.
Be nice to have a formal.
We would like to have a formal.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a formal.
Okay, but I think, I, we'll, we'll work on that, I'll get, I'll get with Allison, let her tell me what I think.
I want to, the Solid Waste, it's actually a Solid Waste study Cord and I are going to meet about, and I talked to Barry briefly, Barry's, Barry and Ricky, they've been, you know, ever since Cord out, we, we were put on this committee, it's, we, we've been proactive, not to say that Mike wasn't when he was on there, but this study coming up is going we, we've been proactive, not to say that Mike wasn't when he was on there, but this study coming up is going to be, I mean, we're going to throw a lot of stuff in there. So just be prepared for what's going to be issued and what, what's coming out of it. And, um, I appreciate Barry for, for taking the ball on that and covering that with me again tonight because there's some, there's some more things I would like to have included in that study. Um, just the last thing, Mayor, before I turn it over to Mr. Hubbard, is, uh, uh, Harry, uh, Sam, you were involved in a recap of the Vision 2020, but I talked to Harry briefly about that. I would like to see us have a work study. I don't know, or not a work site, ah, a work session on it. Uh, I don't know, you know, if we need to have Kevin Byrd in again or, or another facilitator. I thought it worked very well. And Sam, you would need to tell, say if that really helped you when we all met for that work session in Blacksburg, but.
That's right.
I like, it, I think it would greatly help Harry if, if, because that Vision 2020 is something that we, you know, we all, majority of us, we created when we were here and it's something we have pretty much stuck to and like to see it's continued because we're closing in. It's 2016 right now. We don't got a lot of time. It's not saying that we're going to throw a lot of stuff on there because.
We're talking about this.
We have, and we have.
So that's part of, part of that task list that needs an update. I agree, I think it's time. I, what I would hope that we could maybe do is get, once the new town manager's on board, it would be a great time to go over that with him. And let him see where we were and, and not, you know, we could afford to buy Barry a hamburger to come over. I mean, after, after he's, but it, but, you know, shortly after we, we have named a replacement of his onboard and Barry's still working for, maybe we can set that up. And I think it would just be good to get, you know, we could show the guy, the guy or girl, the, the person, a piece of paper, but to go through and, and hear like we did the last time, I think would be.
We had a whole, what, exercise, didn't we? We were filling things out and sticking it on the board.
I think, I think that was a great meeting.
It was.
And it's sort of, and Brad, you're right. We did, we've done a lot of that stuff, which, you know, thank you, Barry, thank you, staff. But I think that helped not only us, but Barry.
Helps the staff because we, we know what to work on.
Yeah. Um, I do have one more thing.
Okay.
Taking after you. Um, you know, a few times this year, and I know we mentioned all the time, I don't want to get too much into Robert rules and things like that. And I know we're all, we have a certain type of personality, um, but I would like for us all to think and even, you know, buy into this. And I've talked to the mayor about this and Mike, you might have been jumping in, going to jump into this tonight, but I'd like, you know, yeah, we can put something on the table, but it seems like we're all angling to get our, our something in to say. I would like that for us all, for the mayor to actually referee that, uh, so each of us can have maybe a three-minute session. And some of us, and some of us may not have anything to say before we throw it on the table for the, the debate to happen. Because I really feel like, uh, and those of you who are here tonight, um, once, uh, you know, once one person has a turn to talk, another person will, and then that same person and, and will, will jump back in. And, and there's a lot of us who have something to say or none of us have anything to say, but I'd at least like to give everybody in a real order. Have an opportunity to say something, and if not, throw it on the table, then we can hash it out. And, but I'd like to give everybody an opportunity to at least contribute prior to us. Because, I mean, I, we can spend twenty-five minutes with just two people hashing it out before we, you know, give anybody else an opportunity to talk. Now, I'm saying you may not, again, you may not want to add to it considering the subject, but at least give, uh, everybody an equal opportunity to have something to say off the bat before we throw it in and start picking it apart or, or, and that's just.
We always go to the three-minute thing we have on, uh.
Well, you mentioned three minutes and I think that's fair, but I'd rather not, I'd rather give everybody an opportunity prior to the debate happening. How about that? I could have summed it all up in less than twenty minutes with that. So that's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm exhausted.
Completely.
Harry, I just want to welcome you to be here like everybody else. You know, it's nice to have you here.
Thanks, buddy.
And, uh, I'm sorry that, that Mark has left and Barry, this is maybe due to, my, uh, daughter lives at the end of Tranquility, so I have to make that turn up down Independence to, to Tranquility. And I think that's, that is a dangerous area right there. And I think something, Cord, there's some good points there that, that you made on there. And I think that's definitely an area to look at because those cars are just flying when they come over that hill. Uh, and since we're talking about the Cemetery Committee today, and I think I mentioned it, but I, we're really going to have, if you may put it in your, in your, on your calendars, uh, Memorial Day. And Memorial Day, the VFW, they do their presentation and they do a great job if you've never been there. And then right after that, we're planning on doing the dedication of this column there and which is, is, uh, going to be really noteworthy. And if you're not that familiar, you know, this, if you're going to get cremated, this is, uh, we need this. Our cemetery is one of the few that don't have that. Mark, I was just saying about the Tranquility thing and Independence, and I agree with these guys. It, it's something maybe you want to look into.
That's even though you didn't have anything to say that night.
That's exactly right. I'm glad you didn't come over to bury. We'd still be here about nine thirty. Yeah, I would get there. I'll, I'll give it to you all. We'll discuss a, a, a timing method or something, uh, on this because I, I believe in my previous comments that I had gotten away from. It was the praise the Lord and pass the biscuit stage where everybody had, had to get into it. So we'll, we'll, we'll try to let it back. Anything else to come before council of Barry's, uh, uh, report?
I have two public hearings set, one for the Urban Agricultural Ordinance. Uh, I'd like to set that for the ninth of February.
Two thousand seventeen?
Chicken and bees.
Whatever year it suits y'all.
Chicken and bees. Okay. Bird and bees.
Uh, and the other one is for proration. It could be at next meeting. We only have to advertise it seven, seven days beforehand if we want to push it that quick. Which would be the twenty-sixth of, uh, January.
Would that provide enough time, uh, of the reports we were going to get, Mr. Helms?
We're getting the other reports.
Well, I, I think that the town attorney mentioned something about the proration as well.
Well, we just wanted to make sure of, uh, implementation, what the, what it means on taxes. I think, uh.
Would they give you enough time, though, just two weeks to?
Yeah, we'll get it done.
Okay.
And I think the sooner we do it, the more it'll be, you know, more appreciated. I wonder is that correct, Val, one way or another?
I'm sure the county commission around the office will be able to.
So two public hearings for Urban Agricultural Ordinance on chickens, the ninth of February and proration, twenty-sixth of January.
So moved.
Any discussion? Senator Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Go to six oh, thank you.
Blacksburg Transit met with us last week and we're going to have another meeting first part of February. And Harvard grant funding has gone away for the Blacksburg Transit. We were getting about two hundred sixty-eight thousand a year for, through grants. This coming year, we have approximately a hundred thousand left over from previous years that we can use. But we're going to have to talk about either cutting costs or funding, making up the difference from general fund for that upcoming budget. They had some ideas and one of them I wanted to run by you, uh, so if we're going to do it, they could go ahead and get started on. That's, uh, expanded marketing, marketing efforts for sale advertising on the vehicles. Right now, what happens if they sell advertisement on one of, any of their buses? If the business is in Christiansburg, we get the profit off of that advertising towards our system. If it's in Blacksburg, they get it. If it's, uh, having a business in both places, they split it. But right now, the Christiansburg buses are wrapped with, uh, the Christiansburg logo and there's basically not any advertising on those. And they could put some advertising on the back or on one side or, you know, not have the full thing wrapped. They're ordering new buses and that's why they'd like to know this soon, so.
Kind of revenue is that, Jerry, Mr. Helms? Is that, is that expensive, that marketing, that advertising?
Um, the revenue off of it would be, if we didn't have the Christiansburg graphics on the bus, first year would be about two thousand dollars extra income. I'm taking that per vehicle. And if we have the graphics on there and put it like on the back or something, it'd be a thousand dollars a year additional income.
About a thousand dollars additionally if we kept the graphics, but.
Most of the graphics, yeah. And that's, that's big as we use, and I want to bring it to council because the graphics, it's, uh, it's nice.
Yeah.
They know it's a Christiansburg bus.
I like the, well, for one half of one percent, it's not even worth spitting over, I don't think. I mean, but that's, I mean, I like to see the Christiansburg, if we're talking ten percent of the operating cost or something, that'd be different.
Right.
How come they lost the funding in the grants?
They changed the way, the federal government changed the way they issue the grants. And now it comes to the MPO and it's not, for our system, we're not authorized to get that, that type of grant anymore. So it went away this, it's already gone away. We just had funds to cover it.
Barry, how long's it, we, how long, I know it's been since I've been on council. How long has that been, those routes have been running?
Sorry, like mid-nineties.
Oh, those routes.
Blacksburg.
No, our, our, our extra routes, I'm sorry, not the, uh, ones that mall.
I don't remember.
I got two thousand and none.
It's about, about six years, I believe.
Right around that timeframe. It was about, uh, a year after Councilman Van Hoeder came on because, yeah, he wasn't a big fan at the start, but.
Is there any, any current data on ridership? For a while, they were giving us something every year.
It's been terrible since Becky left. We haven't got anything.
Uh, we have a new director now. He came the other day to meet with us.
Okay.
Do you think he can maybe talk to council too before, and with the ridership and whatever?
Some updates, yeah.
I hate to say another work session, can we do something informal so it can really have a meaningful conversation about it?
That's, yeah.
I would like, I would like to have, even if it's an hour or four, a council meeting in the next six months is to sit down with. Work session is, the dog and pony show is great, but there's a lot of questions we might be missing or. I haven't done work sessions out forever, man. I'll try to get it. I don't want it.
I'll try to get it before, well, sometime during the budget, budget process because you, you're going to be talking about spending another hundred and sixty-eight thousand this year and next year, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And there's some options on, well, you have the list of possibilities that they came up with at your desk. Looks, looks like this.
And I, and I think.
Blacksburg Transit.
Let me mention, Mr. Helms, real quick, that, uh, the transit, you know, we, very contentious six years ago. Uh, recently, just to, I mean, I think council, y'all will appreciate this, but, uh, recently in the, in the foster care context, um, when young men or women decide they're going to remain in what's called independent living status, so after they're eighteen, they decide. Because really, maybe there's not anywhere for them to go. They can maintain in aggregate care, which is like a residence facility, or they can, uh, through the Department of Social Services under the state government, there's funding. They can get to help them get an apartment. Ironically enough, Christiansburg is becoming very desirable for young men and women that I work with especially, but, but all over the area because a lot of times they obviously can't have a car yet, they can't afford that. But if you can get them an apartment here in the town of Christiansburg, because we have that transit system, they can get to do a community college there at the mall, at the mall site. They can get their groceries and things, and there's so many stops. I mean, you're, everywhere you're at, you're almost a, a walking distance from a stop. Um, but the DSS still pays for a big percentage, if not all, of their rent utilities and allows them to really get a springboard because they don't have any other options. But Christiansburg, um, is really desirable because of that. Like Rafford, I believe, has a public transportation system which really helps out. And so, but we, that's actually, we, we had a discussion about that in the last week and, but the routes, excellent routes here in Christiansburg. So I, I, that's something I never thought about, but it's actually coming to full force and it's really making a difference on a lot of the young people who work there. Very disadvantaged, so, I, I've been digressed, but that was, that's been on my heart. I want to mention that because I was someone who did not like that bus system because of the money. And I have to admit, it's, uh, really proven a benefit to young people, so.
Well, it's been a while, but Harry, it's a, it's a huge commuter, uh, for people who work at that.
If you ride the bus and, and when I've ridden it, the four or five times I've ridden it as a commuter, I ride in Blacksburg all the time for work, but, when I say all the time, at least once a month I'm probably on it. But if you talk to the people, what I've done, made a point when I ride it is to talk to the people and ask them where they're coming, where they live and where they're going. It's fascinating. There are the housekeepers at tech, there are sometimes a veterinary med student, um, but they all, they all, um, but anyway.
Yeah.
I encourage you to ride it and have those, you know, have a conversation or two and find out what people are doing.
I'll just, uh, finish with this. There, yeah, there's a lady in our department who rides it every day, every day.
Oh, and you're in the Versus Office? That's cool.
And they are having trouble getting drivers right now, part-time drivers. It's terrible. We're having trouble getting part-time people at the Aquatic Center, too, because of, well, don't know why, but it's just hard to find part-time people right now. You mentioned two work sessions. I don't know if you have to look at calendars and talk about the next council meeting or if you're prepared. You'll set one on the task list. And BT update, and I think you discussed the 2020, having it a little bit later.
Do we have anything, the first meeting in, uh, February? Cause Sam, we have the Central Advisory Committee.
On the second. And then the ninth, right now, I don't think there's anything scheduled for the ninth. We need to have a Street Committee meeting at some point.
So we have the, the.
Cord and I are ready by any time.
Yeah, on the, the wastewater, the water sewer.
No, I was talking about on the work, for the task list, work session and the, uh, BT update.
Um, whatever you all like to do.
I like to jump on that task list. That'd be good.
I agree with Sam. I think that's important.
That's the ninth of February. Five-thirty or six.
We're going to get the, we'll, we'll have the task, the update sent to us beforehand, Mr. Helms, I'm sure.
For the BT?
Uh, the task list. So I, I mean, I, I just, I think we could do it from six to, well, six is that enough time, gentlemen?
February ninth?
Yes. Or do y'all want to go five-thirty or?
I think six is, I mean, we're just covering it, right? Reviewing it, like what we've done, or what we need to add or.
Where we need to concentrate.
Yeah, we're not going to concentrate on one subject. This is just a task list, making sure it's up to date and we're a good refresher for us to see what we're going to do or if we need to have further work sessions from there for certain subjects on there.
So we're going six o'clock on the ninth.
And BT update, I'll get with Mr. Fox and see what his available, availability is and try to schedule that before one of the council meetings. I don't know what's your schedule's going to be like for the interviews and stuff or how long that's going to be.
Tuesday, I guess it will.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we got a lot of those.
Yeah.
Something else to factor in. It looks like if we go from mid-March later where we should be, anything before then, we should be fine, Mr. Helms, I believe. That's what it sounded like.
Need to have a Finance Committee meeting.
I was going to say.
First week, if I can meet with the Finance Committee after this for a second or two to.
Yeah.
Pick a date. And the Water and Sewer Solid Waste Committee, we can pick a date for y'all to.
Is there any particular you want for Water and Sewer, Mr. Helms? Because I, and I'll do whatever you all like to do, whatever's committed with you and with Henry and with Mr. Ricky.
You probably need to be there. I won't be gone next two weeks.
You want to look at the twenty-third, would that work?
Uh, I'll be gone until the.
Twenty, no, no, twenty-third of February.
Oh, twenty-third of February.
Or actually, that's probably too late.
What day is that?
That's a Tuesday before council.
I'm good with that.
If that works with your schedule, Mr. Helms, and, and, and Mr. Bourne, should we, do we check with him, though, just to make sure?
Yeah, um, I'll check with him, but he should be available.
Yes. Y'all want to do that before council, Mr. Helms, at six as well or five-thirty or after council or?
Oh, we'll talk about that.
Whatever suits y'all.
I, I, I think six o'clock we should be fine, or five forty-five, actually.